Very briefly, open the meeting. Our first item is action minutes from May 26, 2021. Although the commission could adopt these at some point, we're going to move this over to our next meeting. That will give you an opportunity to listen to the audio and video, so you'll see what happened with those minutes before you decide whether or not you'll approve those minutes or not. And Madam Secretary, could you call the roll?
Mario Masial Jr.
Present.
Ricardo Vasquez.
Present.
Present.
Okay, so we've called to order, and we'll start with our pledge of allegiance. The only one that I'd met before is Mr. Masial, so I'll ask you to lead us in the pledge of allegiance if you have any mind.
Excellent. All rise. The right hand over your heart, and repeat after me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republican for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, sir. We don't have any matter set for public hearing, and as I mentioned, our consent calendar is going to be continued to our next meeting. So that brings us to item number two, the election of Chair and Vice Chair of the Planning Commission. How this normally works is any Commissioner is allowed to recommend someone for the Chair or Vice Chair. We'll start off with the Chair, and anybody that gets recommended will then have a roll call vote, and then whoever has the most number of votes will be your Chair. And then after that, the Chair will lead the meeting, and will conduct the same process for the Vice Chair. Okay? All right. Are there any recommendations for the Chairman of the Planning Commission?
Yes, Juan Valenzuela.
Thank you very much. Ms. Valenzuela has been recommended as the Chair of the Planning Commission. Are there any other recommendations?
I'd like to nominate Mr. Mario Masial.
Okay, we have Mr. Masial recommended as well. Are there any other recommendations for the Chair of the Planning Commission? Okay? Going once, going twice. Any other recommendations? Okay. But we have two Commissioners that have been recommended. We'll start off with Ms. Valenzuela. And Madam Secretary, could you call that roll call vote?
Mario Masial Jr.
Ricardo Vasquez.
Sorry. Sorry, I didn't vote. I say yes for Ms. Valenzuela. We'll leave it up to you, please.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, so we've received a unanimous vote for Ms. Valenzuela as the Chair, so we will bypass our second recommendation. And congratulations, Ms. Valenzuela. You're now the Chair of the Planning Commission.
Thank you.
The Chair always sits here, so you can get up and take your proper position. And I know that you've not been a Commissioner before, so if there's any assistance that you ever need, even during a meeting or anything like that, you can always call upon Ron or myself, and I'll try and lead you in the right direction, at least to start off with, and I'm sure that you'll be able to catch on very, very quickly. So we'd like to conduct the Vice Chair recommendations, and you would do that the same way we did for the Chair. So you would call for recommendations and then move forward.
Okay, perfect. Thank you. Okay, so at this moment, I'd like to call for recommendations for the Vice Chair.
I'd like to recommend Commissioner Mario Masial.
Okay, and we heard none. Madam Secretary, can we call the vote, please?
Thank you. Mario Masial Jr.
Yes.
Ricardo Vasquez.
Yes.
Jen Escalbosa.
Yes.
Joanne Valenzuela.
Yes.
And Eric Pena.
Yes.
Okay, so congratulations, Mr. Masial. And now, we'll go ahead and move on to item number three in the consent calendar.
Mr. City Attorney.
Yes, sir.
Your mic. I just want to make sure your mic is on.
Yes, I forgot to turn on my mic. See, we all make mistakes, and we're all a little nervous up here, right?
As the, Mr. City Attorney is getting ready to present, I would like to make note that the Planning Commission bylaws have been provided to you on the dais for your reference or review. The appointment of the Chair and Vice Chair is for one year, so it'll, the appointment will begin again in July of next year, for that term. Again, it's recommended that the Commissioners fill the Chair or Vice Chair at any time during their tenure on the Planning Commission. So if you, again, as the City Attorney mentioned, if you have any questions regarding the bylaws, please feel free to reach out to staff.
Okay, Madam Chairman, Mr. Vice Chair, members of the Commission, I'll be presenting to you the Ethics of Public Service today, along with some overview of the Brown Act and some of the other rules and regulations that you're going to need to follow as a Planning Commissioner. Believe it or not, I started out my public service as a Planning Commissioner in the city of West Covina. So I'm well aware of the important task that you'll be performing for the city of Baldwin Park. It is extraordinarily important, because you will be looking at development projects and other kinds of issues. It will really determine the face and the vision and the look of Baldwin Park for many years to come. So you have a very important position, and I want to congratulate you for your appointment, and thank you for your service. Go to the next slide, please.
Is already next slide.
Yes, please. Okay, so we have some objectives that we're going to want to fulfill tonight. Number one is to familiarize yourself with laws that govern your service and when to ask questions. Many of you are new, and there's going to be a lot of times where questions come up. I want to emphasize that, that you probably cannot ask enough questions as you start this type of service when you have not been familiar with it or had experienced it before. So please feel free to do that. Ron, I think he knows everything. He really is an extraordinary employee for the department, and so anything you need to ask him, feel very, very comfortable doing that. Of course, if there's any legal questions or anything, ethical questions or things like that that come up, you can feel free to call me as well, okay? I want to encourage you to think beyond just the legal restrictions that I'm going to talk to you about, and to provide tools for you to think about that, and how you're going to think about the different decisions that you come up against, the different challenges that you may experience on the Planning Commission. And I want to provide guidelines for you to help you guide, to guide yourself in those decisions. Next slide, please, Mark. When you're a member of the Planning Commission, you're going to be governed mostly by the Brown Act and what's called the Bagley-Keen Open Meeting Act. Most of the time, we refer to the Brown Act, because it's very, very similar, and there are only a few little differences, but most of the time, when we'll be advising you, we'll be advising you about the Brown Act. Very important to remember that perceptions are very, very important. Not just what you do up there and what you say up there, but how it's perceived and what it looks like to the public. Because at the end of the day, that's what we're here to do, is to serve them, and so that they know that you are serving them. And so that perception that you are serving them and not doing things for your own interest or your own personal interest is very, very important, and you should always remember that when you're up there. One key concept is the actions and decision-making in the public interest. So we're going to talk about that a little bit as the slide goes through, okay? Next slide, Mark. Ethics in daily life and values. There's some things that will really, really help you as you go through your experience here on the Planning Commission. And these are some of them. To be able to be trustworthy, right? You want your staff members, your colleagues, to know that you're trustworthy. Most important, you want the public to know that you're trustworthy. You want to be loyal to the principles and the law that we're going to explain to you today, and some of the things that you're going to be governed by. You want to be responsible as a Planning Commissioner, so that everybody can rely on you and feel like if they need something, whether it's a member of the public, a staff member, or the Secretary, the Mayor, City Manager, that you will be responsible to that inquiry. And in terms of a body, you have to work together. You have to work, that doesn't mean you always have to agree, but you should work together as a body. And to do that, you really want to have respect for your colleagues, you want to be fair in the decisions that you make, and you want to have compassion towards them. If they're experiencing very difficult decisions, it'll happen. Sometimes you'll really, it'll be a gut-wrenching decision that you have, and somebody may need to talk to you, whether it's a staff member, another colleague, and you just want to have compassion for them. In addition, the public, right, and the developers that come before you and other people, to treat them with proper respect and compassion, and let them know that you care about what you're doing, about their project, and about what's happening here on the Commission. Next slide, please. Okay, there's a difference between values and ethics, okay? We all have values, we all live by a set of values. Those are the things that you ought to do, are the things that you think that you should do. But ethics are things that you must do. They are based on law, they are based on principles that we all govern ourselves by in the state of California, and whenever you're on a government entity such as this. Regarding ethics, because they are mandated, they're laws, they're things that you have to do, there are minimum standards, there are things that you have to meet, and then there are standards above that. And some people carry themselves at one level, other people at other levels, but we all must meet the minimum standards of ethical responsibility. If you don't meet those minimum standards, there are penalties. Those penalties could be fines, those penalties could go up to criminal penalties, right, if you're not meeting certain conflicts of interest and things of that nature. There will be legal, there'll be legal issues, the ethical issues. Don't feel at all afraid to bring those issues up if you don't, even if you don't know if it's a legal issue or an ethical issue. Bring it up, bring it to somebody's attention, somebody will help you. Next slide, please. I talked to you a little bit about the importance of public perception, and it truly is important. As public servants and public officials, you are stewards of the public trust. People will be looking to you and wondering, can they trust you? How do they perceive you? What are you here for? Those things are all very important to the public, even though sometimes they may not be reality, right? You know, you may be thinking one thing, you may be intending another thing, but the perception is another. And when that happens, you have to try and change that perception, but most of all, you have to be aware of it, that there is a perception issue when you're up there, because you are seen as people, leaders, all right, of the Commission, leaders of the community, people that are trusted and well-valued by the City Council, Chief Executive Officer, and the other people that work for you, including myself. Public servants must maintain a high standard of ethical conduct. It will promote that public confidence, it will make people believe in you, and make people believe that you're doing things for the right reason, and that you're doing everything in the public interest. At the end of the day, that's what we have to remember as public servants, that we try and do everything we possibly can in the interests of the public that we serve. Next slide, please. The Brown Act and the Bagley-Keen Act. I told you a little bit earlier that those are the two main acts that we'll follow. They're very, very similar, so I'm really going to go over, when I do talk about things, I'll talk mostly about the Brown Act. And you'll always hear about the Brown Act, the Brown Act, the Brown Act, the Brown Act, the Brown Act. We'll talk a little bit about specifics as we go along, but that is really the sort of, the Bible, if you will, of what you're going to have to do and how you're going to have to follow the rules as it relates to the Brown Act. Next slide, please. The overreaching purpose is to reserve a seat at the decision-making table for the public. I keep emphasizing that over and over, right? You are sitting in that seat, but the public must know that they are sitting in that seat, that you serve them, that that is their seat, and you're sitting in it for them. You're taking care of them, you're looking out for their best interests. Now, the requirements of these acts, and I'll again mention mostly the Brown Act, can be frustrating for both board members and staff due to unnatural communication patterns, because normally, we're used to communicating in a certain way. We're social beings, we like to talk with each other. The Brown Act has very specific rules about what you can do and what you can talk about as Commissioners. When you're not acting as Commissioners, you can all get together and hang out together and talk about anything you want, except for the Commission, okay? But when you're doing Commission business, and that's whether you're in this chamber or someplace else, there's very specific rules about that. And the rules exist to provide the public with the ability to monitor and participate all of your, participate in all of your actions, and for them to know what you're doing, that you're transparent, that they have an idea and a good understanding of all of the decisions that are being made and all the discussions that are being taken, and know that there's no backroom deals, that there's no private conversations that they don't get to be a part of. Because as I mentioned earlier, you're preserving that seat for them, so they should be able to be, they're entitled to, everything that you talk about, everything that you think about, everything that you say as it relates to Commission business, okay? Next slide, please. This is very important. These rules apply to everyone, regardless of whether you've even been sworn in yet. They apply to you the moment that you're appointed, the moment you're appointed. These Brown Act rules apply to you. So they apply to you now, they will apply to you forever until you are no longer a member of the Planning Commission, okay? Next slide, please. When do these rules apply? I told you they apply now, they'll apply forever until you're not a member. They apply when a meeting occurs and a quorum of the body convenes, and that's either a meeting here where we are, or what they call a serial meeting. And a serial meeting can be something like this. One Commissioner gets on the phone and talks about item number four in the agenda at the next meeting. Okay, we're going to find out that, you know, three people can't talk together, I'm going to get into that in just a minute, but a lot of us know that, right? That a quorum can't get together and talk about something outside of the meeting that creates, that will create a Brown Act violation, right? Because now the public's not a part of it, now the public can't perceive, understand, or see you, and you've done something separate and apart from the Commission that is private that should be public, okay? But that meeting can occur when someone, one Commissioner calls another Commissioner and talks about item number four, and then that Commissioner calls a third Commissioner and talks about item number four. Now, three people have spoken about item number four, even though you're not here, even though you were never together. It may have occurred days later, but the moment three people talk about anything related to the Commission business, you've committed a Brown Act violation. That's called a serial meeting. Everybody can understand that you can't get together, three of you, at Morgan Park, and start talking about the agenda and saying how you're going to vote on the agenda items. That's pretty straightforward, all of us should know that very, very clearly. But it's different about a serial meeting, right? A serial meeting can occur even if you call somebody, a staff member. You call a staff member and you ask, another Commissioner calls another staff, and if you coordinate that, that we're all going to call the staff member, we're all going to talk about this, and we're all going to do this, that's a serial violation as well. So you got to be very, very careful about how you do that, how you can talk to people, and especially coordinating something like that. That's absolutely not allowed, okay? Next slide, please. A regular meeting. Regular meeting is a meeting that we're at right now. This is when you have a time and a date. This is a subcommittee, really, it's considered a subcommittee, and a standing committee, right? And a standing committee is when you have a time and a date, and the committee continues to go on. It's not something that's temporary, it's not something that's done periodically every once in a while, but it's a committee that occurs every time at a certain time and a certain date. That's a regular meeting, that's what we're having right now. Now, it says regular meetings require a 10-day notice, and what that means is, if you don't have a standing time and date, you have to send out a 10-day notice. We don't do that at Baldwin Park, because we have a standing time and a standing date. So that is notice to the public, well in advance, because every two weeks, they know you're going to have another meeting. Well, that's more than 10 days, you've satisfied that 10-day requirement. You also have to have agendas that are posted, okay? And the agendas don't require a 10-day notice, it requires a 72-day notice, a 72-hour notice, excuse me, three days, right? So you have to post your agenda three days in advance. Again, transparency purposes, so the public knows everything that you're doing, they have an opportunity to respond, the 10-day notice, so they know when your meetings are, the three-day notice, they know what you're going to talk about and what's going to be here in case they want to come and participate as well. Next slide, please. A special meeting is just that, it's special, it's not regular. Any meeting that you have that is not on the regular, a regular calendar, the first and third, whatever days they may be, that's going to be a special meeting. And you can call a special meeting with 24 hours' notice. So you can really use special meetings for almost anything, right? Something comes up, the Commission feels like it needs to take care of that issue, it can call a special meeting. Now, a special meeting can only be called by the Chair or a majority of the body, same with the City Council, right? Special meeting can only be called by the Mayor or a majority of the body. The one member couldn't call Ms. Washington and say, we want to have a special meeting, unless the Chair has agreed, then that would be acceptable. Otherwise, you're going to have, and it's a little tricky when you have to have the body, right? Because you can't all three get together and talk about it, that would be a Brown Act violation, okay? So how that has to occur is you would have to contact Ron or contact Ms. Washington and say that you, you individually want to have a special meeting. Then that staff member will contact the rest of the body and see if there's enough members to bring a special meeting. But you can't call two other people and say, look, I need three people to get a special meeting, do you want to have one? Oh, yeah, I'll have one, oh, do you want to have one? What would that be? A serial Brown Act violation, right? Because you've talked to one, and that person talked to another, now you have three votes, now you call a special meeting, now we have a problem. So contact your staff members, or Ms. Washington, or even myself, right? You can contact anybody other than those three, okay? Special meetings are a tool, as I mentioned, to do almost anything, but they're usually used to address unforeseen events, something that you didn't know about when you posted your last agenda, okay? Because if you knew about it when you posted your last agenda, you should include it on the agenda, you should have a regular meeting about that. I don't want to tell you that you can't call special meetings all the time, but you probably don't want to, right? You probably want to use that for unforeseen events, things that are really, really important. But again, it would be up to you as a body and to Madam Chair about whether you do that or not. Next slide, please. Public participation. You've probably all either been or seen to, been or seen a City Council meeting, or another public meeting, that you may have seen on television or been there in person. At every public meeting, there's public communication, you're allowed to be, the public is allowed to be heard, and allowed to speak, and allowed to participate, and they're allowed to consider and talk about each agenda item. They can comment on any matter under the governing body's jurisdiction. That gets a little bit tricky, because what you'll find is, some people will come and they'll want to talk about things that are not in your jurisdiction. For example, they may talk about some federal immigration law that they don't like and that they want to be heard about. That's not in your jurisdiction. So Madam Chair will have to use her discretion about whether she would allow that public communication to go forward. They're not mandatory to allow public discussion on things that are not in your jurisdiction, but a lot of times, you'll give that discretion to the person unless they're abusing that discretion, or you feel like it's somehow interrupting and not allowing the meeting to go forward. All public comments are protected speech, and that includes criticisms about the programs, the policies, and even about you, or any one of these staff members. We've all been at a City Council meeting where public comes up and criticizes somebody. Sometimes it's a council member, sometimes it's a staff member, sometimes it's me. And you have to allow that speech to go forward and understand that that's part of your duties as a Commissioner, is to receive that criticism, listen to that criticism, and be professional as you possibly can. Because sometimes things will be said that will be very hurtful. I hope that that never happens to you, but it could, and you have to be ready for that and understand that it's part of your duties as a Commissioner, to accept that speech, it's protected speech, and to allow that person to make that criticism. Next slide, please. Responding to public communication or public participation. As I mentioned, the public can comment on any matter under the governing body's jurisdiction, and the members can only discuss what's on the agenda. So even though somebody may come and bring up an item that's not on the agenda, and they're allowed to talk about that, because that's under your jurisdiction, you can't talk about that. You're only allowed to talk about matters that are on the public agenda. Now, if you want to go and talk to them privately, or if Madam Chair wants to say, well, we'll address that at another time, or in some way acknowledge that communication, she can. But because it's not on the agenda, you can't start discussing it up here, even though it was part of the public communication, okay? And again, you can always provide a very brief response, you can say thank you, you can, you can direct staff to handle that situation and say, you know, Mr. Garcia, could you please take that person's name and number so that we can address that later on, or anything else that you may think is necessary? Can we please have, you know, some kind of report on that the next time? Something like that is allowed, but not any kind of specific discussion about something that's not on the agenda. Very, very important, right? Because if it's not on the agenda, and you talk about it as a body, the public is denied that opportunity to have participated in that discussion, because there's no notice about it. It was on the agenda. They had no idea you were going to talk about that that night, so that's why it's really important, you really have to stick to the agenda. The public communication can stray for that, can stray from that somewhat, but you cannot. Next slide, please. Closed session exceptions. Now, we don't often do closed session in the Planning Commission, but I did want to touch on it very briefly with you, okay? Closed session is essentially a private communication amongst just you five, or four, or the quorum if the quorum is three. There are only very specific things that can be discussed in closed session. I'll go over that with you at another time, whenever there's an item for that, or if you think we need a closed session items. But, you know, for the most part, there are things that the public should not know about. So for example, with the City Council, if we're doing contract negotiations, if you're negotiating a contract with someone, do you want the other side to know how much you're going to pay? No. So you go into closed session for that. If you're going to buy a piece of property, property negotiations, right? You don't want the other side to know that you think it's worth this or not worth that. Or contract negotiations, you have a contract with an employee that you're thinking about hiring, you go into closed session so you can talk about that contract, where you wouldn't want the person that's the prospective hire to know what the salary might be, what the benefits might be, things like that. So there's very specific things for closed session, and we don't need to go into detail right now, but understand that there is the opportunity to go and talk in private, even though I've told you, you know, the number one important thing is that we do everything in public, right? And that everybody, the public, gets an opportunity to participate. Next slide, please. Thank you, Mark. Closed session is confidential. The whole reason you're going in there is to keep it confidential, okay? If you, if you... If you, if it wasn't confidential, you could be out here and you could talk about it, right? Okay? And only the body can vote, by a majority vote, to waive that confidentiality, okay? Other than that, whatever gets talked about in closed session must stay in closed session. It's, uh, believe it or not, it would be a, be a violation of law to discuss what's in closed session. They, they take it very seriously, that whatever you talk about in closed session should stay there. Uh, next slide, please, Mark. Uh, the remedies for the violation, you know, the decision that you make could be overturned, um, the violations may be stopped, you know, you could, somebody could file some kind of action to stop you from doing that. Um, if there were an action filed, you'd have to pay costs and fees related to attorneys, possibly, and then it is a misdemeanor to, uh, reveal in closed session, okay? Next slide, please. Okay. What if a member of the public contacts you? And they may contact all three of you. That's not Brown Act violation. The only people that are subject to the Brown Act are you. The public is not subject to the Brown Act, okay? Understand that. But if a member of the public talks to you, you can't then go talk to two other members, even at a different time, right? Same thing, um, a serial violation, okay? And the other thing is, is you don't want to solicit that. You don't wanna encourage a member of the public to contact all three of you, right? "Oh, well, why don't you contact so-and-so, and contact so-and-so?" It's not a good idea. They contact you, you can talk to them, you can do whatever you like, but leave it at that, okay? And if they choose to talk to other members of your commission, they're certainly free to do so, but I wouldn't, I wouldn't try and guide or direct that, okay? Next slide, Mark. Social gatherings. Might think, "Okay, gosh, and I'm getting all this Brown Act stuff, I'm so worried about talking to anybody." Your social gatherings, you're fine, right? You know, you can be there with three other of your commissioners in the social gathering. The only thing you can't do is talk about commission business. But you can gather together, you can meet together, you can have dinner together, you can do those things together, but you can't talk about commission business if you're going to do that. Uh, next slide, please. What about conferences? You know, some of you may go to conferences, you're very new. I would encourage you to try and seek out through Ron, or other people, conferences that you could go to, to learn about CEQA, learn about planning, learn about your duties as a planning commissioner. And if you do go to those conferences, probably a lot of you will go together. That is not a Brown Act violation, okay? If you go to a conference, and you all participate, and you say this, and he says that, and she says this, what you don't wanna do is go to a conference, huddle in the corner, and start talking about agenda number four, right? Agenda item number four, right at the next meeting. That's what you don't wanna do. Uh, next slide, please. Okay, I spoke, I, I talked to you a little bit about, you know, committees. A temporary committee, which you could form as a planning commission, is what's called an ad hoc committee. It's a committee that is designed for a specific purpose, you, it has a beginning and an ending, and once the, once the task has been completed for that committee, it disbands. That's an ad, excuse me, that's an ad hoc committee, what's called a temporary advisory committee. Usually composed to less than the majority of the members, and it's not meeting under the Brown Act. A standing advisory committee means that it's ongoing. Those are called standing committees. And it is a meeting under the Brown Act, right? Because you've got, it goes on for, just like this committee, it goes on forever. You're gonna keep meeting even when you're not around, they're gonna keep meeting, they're gonna still have a planning commission. It's got a specific time, it's got a specific place, and you don't have one specific task that, once that's done, you disband, right? You're gonna go over different things at every meeting, you're gonna have different projects, you're gonna have different things that you'll do. Uh, as I mentioned, the planning commission itself is a standing committee. Next slide, please. Oh, and the, the last one, for your commission, this is your commission, right? This is your commission, you're the ones that are supposed to be having the dialogue, you're the ones that are supposed to be making the decisions. City council members, mayors, uh, city managers, they can all come to your meetings, but they can't participate in the way that you are, right? They can be, participate as members of the public, they could even come up and say something if they like, but they're not gonna participate in your meeting in the way that you're participating, okay? Next slide, please, Mark. Okay, if you need a briefing from staff, I, I wrote this in black, and I kinda wanna explain it, most times, you'll want to wait for the meeting, if you can, okay? I'm not telling you you can't ever call staff ahead of time, you can, but just, you know, be careful about that, because of the mention, the reasons I mentioned earlier. If you can wait, generally, most issues can wait. Right now, because you're new, you may be calling them before meetings a lot more than you usually do. But, uh, once you have some experience under your belt, and once you're understanding how everything's going, you probably will not be calling before meetings as often as you, you may be doing right now. And even though you can, and you're allowed to call Ron, or some other staff member, you can't do it in groups of three, right? Yeah, that's the Brown Act violation. You can't decide, "Oh, we all need to know about this," and the three of you call and get on a merge telephone call, or something like that. That would be a Brown Act violation, okay? You can do it on your own, uh, but again, stay away from telling someone else to call, and coordinating any kind of calls related to a staff member that all three of you are gonna do, okay? Next slide, please. Okay, let's talk about money. We, we mentioned it earlier, public interest should be your only motivation, okay? You should not benefit financially from anything related to your position. I think we all generally know that, but it's even more important when you're a member like this, right? You have to avoid even the appearance of something like that happen, if you possibly can, okay? Next slide, please. Examples of financial gain, bribes or kickbacks, uh, self-dealing, and other employment restrictions. And we'll go into that in a little more detail right now. And the next slide, please. Okay, so as a public official, because remember, that's what you are, you're, you're just like a mayor, or just like a city council member, you're a public official, and you cannot solicit, receive, or agree to receive a benefit in exchange for any of your duties, right? And that can come in many different forms, we'll talk a little bit about that too, right? A benefit can be anything of a personal or material value. It doesn't have to be money, it could be something else, we'll talk about some other examples. But the general concept is, nothing that will personally cause you to gain as a result of the duties that you're doing. If you can think about that general concept, you can apply that to a number of different situations. It would include even, you know, getting free transportation someplace, right? Nobody's giving you any money, nobody's, nobody's handing you a check or something, but you're receiving free transportation someplace, like a, a limousine, or a, um, a van ride, or something like that, as a result of your position here. That would not, would not be permitted. Next slide, please. Some other examples of improper bribes, campaign contributions. Can't ask somebody to make a campaign contribution for you, or anyone else, if it's part of a deal. You know, you can't say, "Oh, make this campaign contribution, this person's gonna give you this. Make this campaign contribution, I'm gonna vote on your project." You can't do things like that, even though it's not a personal gain to you, right? Even though it's not a personal gain to you. Jobs, gifts. Can't accept gifts in order to do your duties? You can't accept a job in order to do your duties. And then you have all these other special considerations, right? Something that they would give to you, that would not be available to others, that's also prohibited, and that's also prohibited. Those, remember, if you just think about that personal gain kind of rule, right? Am I personally gaining in some way by this? Then it's probably not allowed, okay? Next slide, please. One of the common things that we think about, when you think about bribery, is quid pro quo. That specifically means that you give something, you get something, right? A quid pro quo. That is a very black-letter law rule, you can't do that. And what I'd like you to do is to think about what you would do if somebody approached you with something like this. And it may not always be, "Hey, I wanna bribe you." It, it's not gonna be like that, right? Sometimes even, even, even well-intentioned about giving gifts, or something that they're just trying to be nice to you. But, you can't accept gifts, you can't accept jobs, you can't accept things to do your public duty, okay? Next slide, please. The penalties are very severe, you can go to prison for that, you can lose your office, you can be barred from holding office, you could be fined, and then, uh, if it were a federal prosecution, the, the fines are, and, and, uh, penalties are even stiffer. Uh, next slide, please. Okay, no self-dealing, right? What that talks about are conflicts of interest. And this, you know, can occur a lot of different times, right? That, you know, bribery is a, something that, you know, hopefully, nobody has ever, has to deal with. But conflicts of interest, you probably will deal with, right? And if you do have a conflict of interest, and you vote on a matter, that's, that's gonna be a problem too for you, okay? And so we have to understand what that is. The Political Reform Act talks about it, Government Code 1090 talks about it, there are conflicts of interest, they're almost always deal with something in a financial nature, okay? And what I mean by that is, if you have some financial interest in a contract that's coming before you, or a development deal that's coming before you, that's a conflict of interest. If, um, uh, if your father or mother are employed by the developer that's coming before you, that could be a potential conflict of interest. That's a closer call, and we'd have to look at that, but that, that could be a potential conflict of interest. If you own stock, or if you own some, some kind of interest in one of these companies that is coming before you, that's a conflict of interest. It usually has to do with financial gain. If you have some, if you're gonna gain financially in any way as a result of the decision that's being made, that could be a conflict of interest. So, for example, let's say, um, there's a development project before you, and you live right next door to that development project, and your house stands to go up $50,000 if that project gets approved, you've got a conflict of interest, okay? Because you're gonna financially gain. The opposite is also true. What if you're going to be impacted negatively, right? Now you've got this project coming in, and your property values are gonna go down the tubes. You've also got a financial interest, right? You've got a financial interest, and you'd be conflicted out of that vote, okay? Next slide, please. The general rule is, a public official has a conflict of interest if the decision will have a reasonably foreseeable, material, financial effect on your economic interests. So it's all about financial effect, right? Whether it's negative, or whether it's positive. You're going to have a windfall as a result of it, you're conflicted. If you're gonna lose a lot of money as a result of it, or even a little bit of money, then you're conflicted. Uh, next slide, please. Okay, disqualification rules. You may not participate in a decision if you have a financial interest in anything related to that, whether it's a family member working for the developer, whether it's you having a 1% interest, maybe, let's say, uh, a national company comes before you at some point, and you own some stock in that national company. You don't own the company, you're not a partner, you're not a, but you have stock in that company, and it hasn't to be a national company, right? You're conflicted, right? You're gonna have a conflict problem if you have stock in that company that's gonna be... Now, again, that is a very close call, it's a closer call, we have to, I'm just giving you general rules right now. We would have to look at that very specifically, to see whether that meets the threshold to conflict you, right? But, I'm trying to, um, sensitize you to any financial interest, anything. You should be concerned about that, and start asking questions, right? Okay, next slide, please. Okay, uh, there's a difference between abstaining and disqualifying yourself, okay? If you've got a financial interest, if you have a conflict, a true legal conflict, you have to disqualify yourself. You cannot simply say, "I'm going to abstain." Abstaining is very different. When you disqualify yourself, you have to get up from your chair, leave the room, and you have to not participate in the discussion, nor can you talk to any of your colleagues about it later on. You can't try and influence the decision, because you're disqualified, okay? You're disqualified, that means nothing, you can't do anything anymore. And you actually have to get up and leave the room, you can't even sit here and listen, okay? Abstention, that's voluntary, you're not conflicted, but you've decided to abstain, you've decided not to participate in that vote for some other reason. Now, I've seen council members abstain because there's an appearance of a conflict, even though they didn't have a conflict. What is that? That's the perception we were talking about before, right? It's perceived, it's perceived that you may have a conflict, even though it's not a legal conflict. And sometimes people will abstain, and that's voluntary, it's not legally required. Uh, next slide, please. Um, as I mentioned, if you are disqualified, you can't discuss, or attempt to influence your colleagues, or staff, that's another important aspect, right? Not even staff, right? Because staff influences your colleagues, do they not? If somebody were to call and ask staff a question, that would have some influence on that commissioner's decision, right? So if you tried as a disqualified, or if you tried as a disqualified commissioner, tried to talk to Ron, and, and influence him on that project, that would also be improper, not just your colleagues, okay? And as I mentioned, you have to leave the room, uh, doesn't matter whether it's on the consent agenda, whether it's on the regular agenda, or anything like that. Uh, next slide, please. Okay, just like the, uh, the financial interest rules, you're gonna have a real problem if you don't follow those, you're gonna have a real problem here if you don't step aside when you're disqualified, okay? It could invalidate the decision that the commission has, it could be a misdemeanor, you could have very expensive fines, you could have to end up getting an attorney, and paying attorney's fees, and of course, there would be public embarrassment that, you know, you participated in something where you were disqualified for, okay? Uh, next slide, please, Mark. Okay, so, some of the things that, you know, we're touching here, we're just touching the surface, right? You know, wha, what we like to talk, the 10,000-foot level, right? We're not getting into the weeds, we're just trying to tell you some very basic, general concepts. But, you may have questions about these as, you know, individual circumstances come up. You can contact me, which is the agency attorney, and I will give you advice about what I think. However, this is very important to remember, that if I give you advice, you're still not immune if you make the wrong decision, because I could be wrong. That's never happened, I'm, I'm just kidding, I don't know. But I could be wrong, I could be wrong, so you don't get immunity just because you get to talk to a lawyer. You still have to do the right thing, right? The only way to truly get immunity is you write a letter to the FPPC and say, here's, that's the Federal, uh, Fair Political Practices Commission. You write a letter and say, "Here's my issue, I've got this much stock in this company, uh, the developer's gonna be before us next week, and I need a written opinion from you, am I conflicted?" They'll give you one, and once you get that, now you're immune. No, if you do what they tell you to do, you can never be in trouble for that. But that takes time, sometimes it takes weeks, right? So if you think something's gonna be a conflict, talk about it early and often, and if it's a close enough call that I'm not even comfortable giving you, I'll always give you advice, but if I would say, "Look, this is such a close call, you really need a written opinion, we need some time to do that, we need some time to do that." You usually know about projects, especially big projects, right? That are coming down the pike several months, right? Or weeks, right? And so, the minute you see something that you think, "Ooh," make the call, make the call. Next slide, please.
All right, I have a question on that.
Yes.
Um, so in the unlikely event that that would happen, um, to make, you know, have sort of the option to make the call, but, I guess, worst, or, well technically, best-case scenario for anyone, or for persons sitting here, we can always disqualify ourselves, right?
Yes, you can disqualify yourself out of the abundance of caution.
Of caution, okay.
Right? You don't have to be legally correct, you could just disqualify yourself, right? And say, "I'm not gonna participate, I'm gonna leave the room, I'm not gonna talk to my colleagues, I'm not gonna do anything." So yes, you have the option of doing that.
Perfect, thank you.
You're welcome. Okay, uh, next slide, please. Uh, special rules for contracts, interest in contracts are forbidden, we mentioned that earlier, right? Disqualification is not enough, just because you disqualify yourself, you've got an interest in a contract, you've got a problem with it's before them. Penalties, refund money received, fine, imprisonment, loss, loss of office, excuse me. Next slide, please. Contractual conflicts of interest, this was the Government Code Section 1090 that we talked about a little bit earlier, okay? And it goes along the same concept, you cannot be financially interested in any contract made by any, anyone that comes before the board, or commission, excuse me. Uh, next slide, please. Okay, future employment issues. You cannot leave this commission and then go get employed by somebody that was here before you. and then go get employed by somebody that was here before you, okay? You have to wait one year after you leave this commission, or you can go get a job for somebody, from somebody that you voted on. And, and they do that to protect you and to protect the public, right? Because a lot of times, I mean, you're going to be voting on projects that are twenty million dollars, big money projects, right? And the people that want these projects are going to make millions and millions of dollars if they get approved. Or they could lose millions of dollars if they don't get approved. And so they may really want you to work with them, they may thought you were a great commissioner, they thought, you know, "Oh, this is a, you know, I really, y- you saw all the, um, you saw all the issues, you identified all the problems, I'm just really impressed with you as a commissioner, I would love to have you on my staff, can't do it for a year." Okay, you gotta wait, gotta wait. Um, and no participation in decisions involving future employers. So if you know you're going to go get a job someplace, you need to disqualify yourself, right? But when you see that person before you, you've already got a job offer, you know you're leaving, you know you got, you know you got a situation coming up, you gotta disqualify yourself, okay? So it's not only, it's, it's both ways, not just making a vote and then going and getting a job. It's even if you already have a job there, you can't participate, okay? Uh, next slide, please. Okay, so the key things to remember. What I started off with, right? Public interest, all right? Always having the public interest in mind, always the public, always the public. That's their seat, remember? You're just holding it for them. You're just sitting there for them, but you're supposed to be there for them. They should know everything you know, they should be participating in everything you're participating in. That's their seat, and they need to know that you're there for them. And that it's not about the money, you know, it's not about financial interests, it's not about personal gain. Next slide, please. Okay, use of public resources, very important, right? You can't use public resources for private interest, okay? So let's say you want to send a letter to the doctor, and you're just, you know, you're here, you want to fax it, you, you, you can't go home and fax, you can't fax it with a fax machine with a city. That's a private issue, you're, you're, you want to set up a point with your doctor, you want to do something, whatever it is, you can't use the fax machine, you can't use the copying machine, you can't use anything, you can't use a conference room to have a meeting with, you know, your college buddies, you know, you can't do any of that kind of stuff. If it's for your own personal use, you can't use the city resources. And that includes any equipment, that includes any space, that includes a phone, all that stuff, right? We have our own phones, so if you're going to make a personal phone call, use your cellphone. Don't go on a city phone and make a personal phone call, even, even at that level. Now, would that be a criminal viola-, no, it wouldn't be a criminal violation. But you just shouldn't do it, you should get into the habit of not using public resources for any personal reason, okay? Next slide, please. Okay, so we talked, I got ahead of myself a little bit, right? Uh, the old fax machine example, haha. But, but staff time, that's important too, right? You can't use one of these staff members to do something for you that doesn't have anything to do with the commission. Even though they probably would want to do it for you, you're going to get to know them very well, they're going to like you, you're going to like them. It may even be a friendship that would develop, right? Um, I've, I've made very many friends from people that I either work for or that I work with. But just always be sure to keep that line separated of using their time for personal things. You don't want to do that, okay? Office space, equipment, supplies, the whole thing. Uh, next, uh, next slide, please, Mark. Reimbursement, it's the public's money, okay? So, um, we have reimbursement policies under AB 12, that's Assembly Bill 1234. Um, and it usually deals with places that you're going to go, conferences, um, if you have to do something for the commission, you're going to want to get reimbursed for that. Like, let's say for some reason you're someplace, and you've got a document, and the commission needs you to fax it to the city of Irwindale. Okay, well, you're going to do that, you're going to go someplace, King Goes or whatever, fax that to the city of Irwindale for the commission. But you can get reimbursed for that, because it's a, it's a expense related to the commission, okay? You go to a conference, have to pay money for the conference, you get reimbursed for that. You eat meals at the conference, you get reimbursed for that. You stay at a hotel, you get reimbursed for that. What you don't get reimbursed for is anything that's not commission-related, right? You can't go to a conference on water because you're very interested in water resources, and, and you're on the planning commission, you can't do that, that's not, that's not, your duty is not water, right? Um, you can't be reimbursed for a spouse or family expenses. So if your spouse is with you, or your family member, and you go out to dinner, their dinner has to be paid for by you, your dinner can be reimbursed, okay? And usually, um, I don't know what that is here, to be honest with you, but I'm also, uh, I'm general counsel of a water district, so I act as that guy for a water district. So I use water examples a lot. There, their policy is, you can't be reimbursed for alcohol, right? And that's not, that's not a state law, that's not a California law, that's just their law. That, you know, there's certain things we're going to reimburse, even if you're at a conference, even though it's a, a water conference and you're supposed to be there, and even if it, you drank it, not your spouse, and all the things, you know, are there, you still can't get reimbursed for alcohol. So it's important to remember, it may not be the case here, I don't know, I've never done any reimbursement for the city of Baldwin Park, I've never had to reimburse anything. But, but point is this, check to make sure what your reimbursement policies are here, if you're going on a conference or something like that, okay? Next slide, please, Mark. Political use of public resources, okay? Um, same kind of thing here. Now you're not using it for personal gain, you're not asking Ron or someone else to do, uh, a fax for you, or to allow you to use a office, but you're using public resources for some political activity, right? To help a council member get elected, to help a ballot measure pass, those kinds of things. Even though it's not personal to you, they'll not allow, okay? And again, the idea is, public resources should only be used for your public duties, related directly to your public, public duties. Um, next slide, please. And, you know, same kind of penalties, right? You know, you've got civil penalties, you've got criminal penalties, but you can also have in- income tax implications, because now you're receiving a benefit that you haven't recorded, right? So there's a lot of bad things that can happen when you use public resources for something other than a public purpose. The next slide, please, Mark. Well, gifts don't always have bows, right? We talked about that a little bit earlier, we talked about travel, right? You can't accept travel. Uh, we talked about meals and food and drink, can't accept those kinds of things for your public duties. And, uh, entertainment, you know, concerts and things like that, just be very careful about that. And it's not always meant to be bad, people sometimes just want to be nice to you, but you have to be very careful. Okay, next slide, please. Gift rules. Okay, so, um, if you receive a gift of fifty dollars or more, you've got to report it. Fifty dollars or more, it's not very much, right? Fifty dollars or more. And the, there's a limit of four hundred and forty dollars of gifts that you can give other people, right? Even that is not allowed, right? Because, you know, you don't want to, you don't want to be giving gifts to developers or something like that, and then there's the appearance that, "Hey, why is that person giving them gifts?", right? Okay. And there are very specific rules about gifts, so whenever anything involves a gift, a gift that you want to give to somebody, or a gift that somebody wants to give to you, talk to somebody about that, okay? Very specific rules that we can't all go into right now. Next slide, please. Again, very strict penalties, uh, very strict penalties of, uh, five thousand dollars per violation, you might have to get a lawyer, all those kinds of things that will really cause problems for you. Okay, Mark, now the next. We talked about plan- transportation, we talked about, you know, you could lose your seat here on the planning commission if you take, um, uh, gifts like transportation and other things. Next slide, Mark. Okay, key things to remember, avoid the rationalization trap, right? Avoid trying to figure out, like, "Okay, it doesn't seem like..." If you start to think about it, you should ask. If you're even thinking about it, whether it would be appropriate or inappropriate, you should ask somebody. And again, beware of people's nice gestures. Sometimes they don't mean to hurt you, they don't mean to do something that's going to harm you. They may be just trying to be nice, but beware, be, be, beware of that. Uh, next slide, please. Okay. We talked about it before, right? Just kind of summarize the universal ethical values, trustworthiness, loyalty, responsibility, and respect, fairness, and compassion for your fellow commissioners. Always try and keep those things in mind. Um, there are probably some characteristics that you already live by, but it's really important as a member of the commission to, to, to try and do that with others and with your fellow commissioners. Next slide, please. Okay, so, uh, some general recommendations I'll leave you with is be truthful with your fellow elected officials, you're not really elected, you're appointed. Um, but even when it involves something they're not going to want to hear, it's going to happen. You know, it's all great right now, everybody's here, there's a clean slate, it was a very, uh, nice thing to get appointed, you're going to feel a camaraderie with one another, but there's going to be a time when you're going to need to talk truthfully to some of your colleagues, and they're not going to want to hear that. But it's okay. That's the hallmark of a good and functioning body, right? It has discourse, it may sometimes disagree, um, but is not afraid to do so. Because you're not always going to agree, and if you do, it's going to seem weird. Right? You know, if you always agree, it's just going to seem a little unusual that you're always agreeing, because most people don't. You know, if you get five people in a room, you get five different minds and five different perspectives, you're not, usually not going to agree on one hundred percent of everything from now until you're off the commission. Avoid, uh, any actions that would, you know, be bad perceptions, we get back to perceptions here now, where people might question your motives or question your intent. And always try and avoid anything that would violate meeting requirements, the Brown Act, right? You know, um, if you are going to get together, if you're all going to get together for some reason, don't let it be in some private place, that, you know, you're not trying to be seen, and you know, that kind of stuff, you know? If you go to a public place together, okay, that's great, you know, um, park, or restaurant, or something like that. But just try and avoid that appearance as well, okay? Next slide. Don't, uh, don't accept gifts, we talked about that, don't make, uh, don't make or use false or inaccurate information. And don't use your position for public, uh, personal gain. Next slide. That's it, okay. And a lot of this is, you know, we would all consider common sense, right? We do, and, and a lot of it will be common sense to you. But if it's not, and again, the rule I try, if you even think about it, don't try and think it out, ask somebody. If you're thinking about it, that means it's maybe a question, okay? And I'm here for you, uh, I, I'm, I'm going to give you my cellphone number, so that you, if you could all write this down, oh wait, we're, we're on the public? Okay, I'll give it to you separately, okay? So, haha, but I do want you to have my cellphone number so that you can call me and talk to me about anything. And I do really, really invite you to use the resources that you have. This is an extraordinary staff, it truly is. I have, I've worked with a lot of different cities, I've been a city attorney in other cities, I'm the general counsel for the water district, I'm the general counsel for a school district. I work with a lot of different staff, and I can tell you that you are very lucky to have the staff that you have. They will always be there for you, they will do it with a smile, they'll go above and beyond for you. So don't ever hesitate to engage them, because they, they want to be there for you, okay? All right, and then, I, I think Ron's got another presentation for you as well. I'm sure his is going to be more interesting than mine, but, you know, that, that's the way it goes. When you're a lawyer, no one likes a lawyer, right? All right.
Thank you, Robert. Thank you, Robert, it's always great to have a refresher on, uh, the Brown Act. Thank you for that, uh, excellent, uh, presentation. Um, as the city attorney mentioned, uh, this is an opportunity, um, uh, for us planners to, what I like to call, and they're going to laugh, uh, we get to nerd out, um, talk about planning. Um, I, I will say, and I think I mentioned this to some of, um, some of my colleagues, is, uh, out of my entire, uh, my, my career so far, sixteen years plus, this is the first time, uh, that I've been dealt a, a brand-new planning commission. Uh, so it, it, so this is an exciting time, we're trading in water, but we're all very excited to work with you. Um, and, and again, as the city attorney mentioned, we're here to, to assist. Uh, and we're that vessel that helps the process move along, uh, in making sure that the process is transparent. Uh, and then we're here for, uh, the community as much as we're here to provide assistance to the commission. So first off, um, Mark, next slide, please. So essentially, the, the presentation here is, uh, it, what I like to call the nuts and bolts of, of planning, uh, for the planning commission. Uh, next slide. So the topics that, uh, we're going to cover is land use regulation, uh, general plans, zoning, and, um, our favorite, um, very few colleagues of mine love CEQA. If you've, uh, read about CEQA, um, some, some people refer to it as the black hole. But, um, uh, it, uh, we'll go over that, so we'll try to make it as, um, uh, as concise and as the city attorney mentioned, we'll probably take this at, at the forty thousand, uh, foot level. Next slide. So there's two types, uh, of land use that's defined in California state law. So one is a general plan, and that is required by state law. Every city in the, uh, state of California has to keep a general plan, uh, for the city. And essentially, what I like to call it, it's the blueprint and the constitution for planning and development within the community. Um, it provides a long-range vision, and typically, that ranges between twenty and thirty-year, uh, with the horizon. Currently, the city of Baldwin Park, uh, that horizon was last year. It was, uh, adopted in two thousand and two, and that horizon was in twenty twenty. Um, so it's our hope, uh, uh, general plans, uh, are very expensive documents, uh, very, very expensive. Um, it's our hope that in the next, you know, uh, five, uh, six years, that, um, the city can obtain, uh, the funds necessary to undergo a comprehensive general plan update to plan for the future, because again, uh, as time goes by, communities change, and we need to adapt to that change, um, with respect to, uh, development within the community. The document essentially translates the vision, as I mentioned, into goals and policies for the physical development of the community within its city's boundaries. Uh, and then second is zoning. So, um, some like to refer it as the teeth, uh, that provides, um, the, and regulates, uh, what the vision indicates in the general plan for the next twenty to thirty years, uh, for the community. Uh, and again, it's a special set of development standards, and we'll, we'll touch on, on that in the, um, later in the presentation. Uh, so it's a special set of development standards that regulates the land uses within that community. Next slide, please. And that general plan, just want to give you a brief overview, so it's really important to understand that, uh, California state law requires eight, um, for, uh, um, a number of years, for as long as I can remember, even in college, there were seven required general plan elements, uh, required in the general plan, and that included, uh, land use. Um, and I'll just give you a brief description of what those, uh, elements consist of in the city of Baldwin Park's general plan. So for land use, the land use element focuses on how land in Baldwin Park is used for various uses such as housing, jobs, uh, commercial development, schools, community uses, public buildings, facilities, parks, open space, and promotes equitable distribution of different, uh, land uses. The other is housing, that's a big one. Uh, the housing element analyzes Baldwin Park's housing conditions and needs for all income levels, including low-income households, uh, with special needs. It also provides various programs to create a variety of housing to meet Baldwin Park's housing needs. Uh, the current, uh, uh, arena cycle is the twenty fourteen, twenty twenty-one, um, uh, housing element, and that establishes the goals, objectives, and policies that are foundation of the city's housing strategy. City of Baldwin Park, the housing element must be revised, this is one really unique thing about general plans. It's the one element in the general plan that has to get updated, and depending on the city's cycle, it's either a four-year or an eight-year term. For Baldwin Park, it's eight years. So we're there, um, and we're undergoing that exercise now in updating the housing element. And, uh, essentially, has to be submitted to the State Department of Housing and Community Development for review and approval, uh, within those eight years. And again, I'll, I'll provide some detail on the housing element, because that is a special element in that general plan. The other element is circulation. Um, it identifies the general location and extent of, of existing and future transportation networks uh, within the city for all uses, automobile, pedestrian, bicycle, um, and commercial, uh, vehicles. And also, um, uh, highlights alternative modes of transportation, uh, less reliance on the vehicle, uh, creating and locating jobs near, uh, near housing. The other is open space and conservation, uh, which outlines goals and policies that build on existing. The other is open space and conservation, which outlines goals and policies that build on existing recreation and conservation programs. And considers potential resources for new park and open space. Also, the cleanup and preservation of groundwater, and the continuation of waste management, hazardous waste, and recycling programs within the community. It also emphasizes preservation of historical resources within Baldwin Park. The other element is noise. The noise element describes a noise environment within the city and analyzes current and projected noise levels to limit community exposure to excessive noise levels. For noise, you're gonna see this as development proposals come before you, especially with CEQA documents. They'll talk about mitigation measures for noise trucks. All that gets analyzed, especially because when you have development adjacent to residential uses, those have to be mitigated. So there's, in our zoning code, there's hours of operation for those types of uses. So that way, those are minimized and don't have negative impacts on the community. So there's certain hours that you can for as small as a lawnmower or a construction truck. That is what the general plan is referring to in this for noise. Safety, that outlines the goals and policies aimed at reducing the risks associated with hazards within the city. Policies in the element focus on protecting life and property from hazardous conditions. And the emphasis there is placed on emergency response in the event of a disaster. I wanna highlight the safety element. That is also an element that is being updated concurrently with the housing element. Because per state law indicates that in the next housing cycle for Baldwin Park, and the way that it worked out on the schedule, had to update the safety element as well. So we're doing that as well. Our police department, LA County Fire, currently reviewing the draft, the administrative draft, and also as well as staff for that. So I wanna highlight that that's being revised as well. Another element, this is the one that got recently added with SB 1000, is the environmental justice. Baldwin Park has to adopt an environmental justice. So we have, just to emphasize, we're doing the housing element, we're doing a safety element update, and an environmental justice element as required by state law. The one unique thing about, one unique thing about the environmental justice element is that it can either be a standalone element or it can be interwoven. And I'll go into detail on another element. In this case, you're gonna see that the environmental justice element's gonna be interwoven with the health and sustainability element that was adopted in 2015. Which is a great element that the city did adopt, which promotes healthy living and active community. And I'll go into detail with that in a later slide. It's required, and again, as I mentioned, per state law. And the objectives for the environmental justice element is to reduce health risk within a disadvantaged community. Most of Baldwin Park isn't a disadvantaged community. We'll highlight that. It also is to promote civic engagement in the public decision-making process, and also prioritize programs that addresses disadvantaged communities and their needs. Now, there are optional elements that were included in the general plan that was adopted back in 2002. And those are economic development, urban design, and air quality. For economic development, it guides the economic development of planning initiatives consistent with other elements within the general plan. It also identifies the economic factors affecting the city and presents economic goals and policies to help the city achieve its goals. Now, urban design, this is a favorite of mine, addresses a city's visual and aesthetic resources focusing on quality and character of public areas, private development in Baldwin Park. Here, the teeth there is the design guidelines. The city adopted design guidelines, in my opinion, in my professional experience. City has really, really good design guidelines that help staff work with the development community. So that way, the city of Baldwin Park gets good design, good architecture, and something that the city can be proud of. I will say that staff, since I've been here, coming on board in 2018, really have been able to turn the page in working with the development community to provide good design and good architecture. Because at the end of the day, again, this is all refresher for staff, because we talk about it every day. Is, there's no reason whatsoever, there's absolutely no reason whatsoever, why the city of Baldwin Park should not be getting good design and good architecture that you see in other cities in the San Gabriel Valley. That's really key. So I wanna emphasize that, that those design guidelines are implemented when we do review projects within the city, the highest standard. Moving on, is the health and sustainability element, again, that was adopted in 2015. And those set goals and policies, again, to create a healthier, greener, stronger Baldwin Park to increase environmentally, environmental sustainability, economic prosperity, and healthy outcomes across the city. And essentially, the goal there is less pollution, more opportunities to be physically active, and to have a greater access to a variety of healthy foods. I know in the previous past, before my arrival here, there was a healthy foods initiative that I hear was a great program that was initiated by the city. And lastly, is air quality. There is to protect the public health and welfare, that set forth programs to reduce current pollution emissions and to require new development to comply with air quality standards. Reduce vehicular emissions and encourage trip reduction, promote alternative modes of transportation, and encourage, again, as I mentioned, it could mean locating, the goal there is to locate jobs and housing. One of the really unique things, and it's a great asset Baldwin Park has, is that you have a metro link station. You have a complete streets, something that I like to share with you is that we have a complete streets program. One of the most comprehensive complete streets program in the nation. The metro uses Baldwin Park as an example to other cities to adopt complete streets programs. And again, that is to, we're talking bike lanes. A lot of the complete streets that you see off of Pacific, they reduce the lanes. I know that can be a hot topic by reducing lanes. It's a, it's a fun conversation to have at the dinner table, I know for me, because my wife loves, you know, all those lanes and I'm on the other side. So, but it promotes active transportation, you have bicycle lanes. And if you provide the infrastructure, the goal there is when you, if you build it, they will come, essentially. So finally, that, those are the elements of the general plan for the city of Baldwin Park. Next slide. And here, I just wanna show you, this is a depiction of the city's general plan map. So this gives you a general, general understanding. I know it's a little small to see, but it gives you a general understanding of what all the uses are allowed within, throughout the city's boundaries, again. Consisting of commercial, multifamily, industrial, industrial, commercial, public facilities. It outlines what the general uses are throughout the city. Next slide. As I mentioned, the housing element, really important, I wanted, I wanted to spend a little time on this. Especially because we're undergoing that exercise now with the city that's gonna plan for capacity for the next eight years for housing within the city at all income levels. Again, as I mentioned, it's updated and it's based on a schedule by state law, four to eight years. Baldwin Park is on the eight years, 2014 to 2021, and now we're looking at 2021 to 2029. It has to be certified by the State Department of Housing and Community Development. Also, there's a annual housing progress report that is submitted to the city council to let the council know where it stands with implementation of the housing element. For example, every year, we have to report how many units were constructed during that year based on the income levels. So that, that information is shared not only to the council, but also the planning commission as a reminder that there's goals and policies set. So that way, they know where they fall as far as meeting those target numbers. And within the housing element is the regional housing needs assessment, which is most commonly referred to as RENA. And as I mentioned before, the housing need there is by income category. Next slide, please. So here, what is RENA? The regional housing needs allocation quantifies the housing need in each city. So the state determines RENA's numbers for each area of the state. So the state essentially identifies what the housing growth will be for the region. So for Southern California, it was 1.34 million homes for the next eight years in Southern California. So once the state has determined those housing units, then it's gone down to the, the region, which is SCAG. For Baldwin Park, the allocation there is 2,001 units for the next eight years that the city has to plan for capacity. So as I mentioned, we're undergoing that exercise, and I'll give you a little more detail on how city is attempting to meet that RENA number. I didn't put this in the slide, but the current RENA cycle, it's 557 units. So you can see that it jumped significantly. Next slide. You can see here, in comparison to the RENA allocations for cities that are adjacent to Baldwin Park. So for example, you know, one big one is in Almonte. They have to plan for 8,500 units for the next eight years. I have colleagues of mine that work in other cities that they're, I mean, 10,000, 12,000 units. But you can see that those numbers increased. And again, a big reason for that increase is to address the significant shortfall that we have for housing. And again, housing's been a hot topic, heard about in the news, you read about in the LA Times, it's everywhere, and it's up front and center right now. One, one interesting thing to note is that general plans historically, I mean, housing elements historically, in my experience, have been rollover documents. It's a policy document, they work on it, they go through the exercise. But one thing that's changed in the last two years is that the state has made it a priority, changed things. So this housing element is very labor-intensive. And again, because of the significant housing shortage, the housing element is now taken as a very, very serious policy document for cities to take seriously. Yes?
I just have a really quick question. I'm making the assumption that these numbers are, that they come to these numbers utilizing the census. Is there some kind of cushion? Because historically, not everybody participates in the census.
Yeah, you know, I wish I could tell you, it's one good question. I know in the state, when they do their calculation, and then it gets handed down to the region, they go through an intensive model of how they determine that number. It's very, very complicated. I am probably, again, I can't confirm, but I'm sure that the census data does get included in that, in that, in that calculation. I hope that, try to answer that question.
Okay, quick question. So speaking of these numbers, so the 2,001 units roughly that need to be brought up, right? Would this be all brand-new buildings? Or could this be current homes that are vacant lots that are out there? Because if you go around the city, you will find a home here that that's abandoned, and it's just...
It's new, yeah, so the...
Would that be considered as part of this number? Can that be demolished and purchased and redone and counted towards this number?
Absolutely. For example, we deal with a lot of, for example, we have a lot of, I don't wanna say a lot, but we do, we have encountered where you have historically a single-family home, but it's on a multifamily residentially zoned lot. They come in and they demolish the house, and they propose, they go from one unit to 11 units. Those units get counted towards the RENA. But not existing units get counted towards that RENA number. Oh, the other thing too that gets, thank you for that, Melissa, is one thing that the associate planner mentioned is accessory dwelling units. So if you have on an existing lot, accessory dwelling units are incorporated in meeting that RENA number.
Sorry, one last question. So you count each lot, right? So like, let's say we have a home that was a single-family home that turned into a duplex because they have a long lot. Would that be considered two units now?
It'd be one unit.
Yeah, one unit.
Yeah, you count the new unit.
Well, the new unit with the old one, so now it's two, okay, perfect, okay, thank you.
Next slide. So one thing to note, as I mentioned earlier on, the RENA is by income group. So the, the chart here shows what the RENA allocation would be for each of those units based on the 2,001 units that are required under RENA for the city to plan for capacity. You have very low, the goal there is 576 units. And then low is 275 units, and moderate at 263, and then you have above moderate, and that's 882 units with a total of 2,001 units. Again, here is, really, the big thing is to take this into consideration because there's a common misconception. When I read about it or hear it on the radio or hear it on the television, that people think, oh my God, how is the city gonna build all this housing? The city is required to plan to accommodate it. And again, the goal is to accommodate housing needs through land use policies and planning and zoning, and I'll highlight that in the other slide. And again, the key thing is, it's not a construction obligation. It's not a construction obligation. So the city has to plan to accommodate for those additional housing units. Next slide. So zoning, it's an ordinance that implements and is consistent with the general plan policies. And again, it's a teeth, it's a teeth that makes sure that we're following what the general plan sets for goals within the community. It prescribes allowable land uses and development standards, including building uses. So for example, you have commercial uses, it could be various commercial uses, you could have office uses. You could have restaurants with alcohol licenses, you could have restaurants with entertainment. And also, for construction-wise, is building size. So that has very specific development standards that highlight height, lot coverage, depending on how much you can build on a lot, and setbacks, so that way you provide buffer to adjacent properties, a front side and rear setbacks. Landscaping requirements, signs and billboards, depending on how big of a sign you can propose on a storefront. Or again, a billboard, there are other types of signs, like for example, freestanding signs that you see on larger retail centers that are probably 60 feet in height and advertise signage for those businesses within the shopping center. And then there are parking requirements based on what the uses are within that zone. Again, parking for retail, medical, restaurant, they all have different parking requirements that have to be met for those uses. And there are other performance standards, as I mentioned. For example, one, one easy one is for example, drive-throughs. Very specific performance standards that drive-throughs have to abide by. So that's one example. Next slide. So here's just a depiction here of what we use every day, is a zoning matrix. So what this does is it tells us what uses are allowed and prohibited within those zones, and if a special permit is required. One common entitlement that's gonna be coming, that will become, or will be brought before you is most commonly our conditional use permits. And again, that could be a gym, it could be a permit for an alcohol license. Those are the common ones that, that come before the planning commission. Along with other, others that probably will never come before the commission, just based on its use. But I just wanted to give you an example of what that use metric looks like, depending on each zone that's allowed within that. But I just wanted to give you a a um a example of what that um use metric uh looks like, depending on each zone that's allowed within that. Next slide. So here's a a couple of examples that we wanted to highlight of land use entitlements that are common. So for example, again, we mentioned conditional use permits. Another commonly uh uh entitlement is development agreements. Uh, cannabis, uh cannabis uh uses are approved by development agreement. A recommendation of the planning commission to the city council for final uh final approval. Same are for billboards, uh, the billboards that you see throughout uh the city of Baldwin Park as you're driving down uh the freeway. Uh, those are all uh approved by development agreement. Uh, zoning code amendments, uh zoning code amendments, I'll give you one example. Uh, we um late last year, we made a code amendment to the parking standards. Um, we as staff, when we worked through them, and codes evolve. Again, it's like a, it's a li- living, breathing document. We have to be cognizant that sometimes those codes don't apply anymore um because of of changing of the the economic environment. Sometimes they need uh a little tweaking. And one example of that was uh some parking standards that needed to be addressed because they were archaic. They needed to be updated to uh to today's standards. So that's one example. Variances are requesting exemptions, uh, exceptions, I'm sorry, not exemptions, exceptions from the code. Um, a lot of them consist of like setback requirements. One thing about variances uh um is that they are based on unique circumstances. There has to be something unique uh in character about the lot that is keeping uh the development from meeting that requirement. It could be an irregularly shaped lot um that would um keep that development. So sometimes there's some exceptions that need to be made to uh make the project work. And there are specific findings that need to be made uh when those variances are are requested. Um, what I like to say about variances, variances are not like uh 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 they're not to be used as, you know, giving away cupcakes. They they cov- they're far and few between uh and the when those variances get requested. Uh, development plans, uh, that is another one. Uh, specific plans uh within land use entitlements. Specific plans are like mini um developments, and that specific plan sets the parameters of what's allowed um and what's not allowed within that development. Uh, because it's not within, uh, it doesn't meet the regular standards of what the zoning code uh requires. One uh physical example of that is a project that's off of Pacific, uh, the a brand new housing development. There, that's a specific plan, and those homes, that development um is strictly adheres to the specific plan that was adopted. It has its own setback requirements, it has its own height requirements, has its own density, it has its own landscaping requirements. So when um any of those homeowners come in, who want to do, for example, a patio addition, uh, staff and I will review the specific plan, not the general zoning code, specific plan that guides uh development within that setting. Uh, so that that's an example of a specific plan. Subdivisions are a lot of uh, a lot of entitled, that's uh our most common uh that you will see uh is when, and we can use the project that was on Pacific. Uh, it can consist of very large lots, and when they subdivide them to comply with the minimum lot size standards, zoning re- regulations, uh, they go through a subdivision to create, you know, three large lots into forty-eight single family lots. And that could be the same for um uh for commercial development. Sometimes, uh, uh, for example, there's a project on Dalewood, um, that it's a vacant lot, it's right adjacent to the regency. If you guys recall where that is, across from the Jack in the Box off of the Tenth Freeway. Uh, there's a six-story medical office building that's gonna be constructed there. That area consisted of four lots. So subdivision al- also means you can not only subdividing, but also consolidating. The difference between a parcel map and a track map is that it's four lots or less. And a track map is more than uh more than four lots, and sometimes usually includes condominium map, or it's air rights that are approved for that track map. Lastly, we have the general plan and zone change amendments. Uh, and again, as I mentioned, the general plan, we got the housing element, safety element, those are when we need to make uh updates to the general plan. Uh, zone change amendments, uh, depending on what the law, uh, there may be zone change, uh, zone changes needed to go from maybe a commercial to single family, but it's really important there that we cannot, uh, it's it's illegal. Uh, we cannot create a spot zone situation. But when it is uh makes sense, when you can do a zone change from a a commercial to a single family, depending on what is adjacent and what is surrounded by it, um, uh, those uh zone change amendments um uh can be applied. Next slide. So here's just a depiction, um, the overall goal of zoning is to assure that neighboring land uses are compatible. So definitely don't want heavy industrial use right next door to a single family residential home. One thing really interesting, we're coming back to the city of Baldwin Park, is along Arrow, uh, you see a lot of single family homes um mixed in with industrial uses. The general plan uh has set goals and policies to transition those single family hous- uh, single family uses out. So that way you have commercial development, so that way you get rid of the imbalance of of residential and commercial development. Uh, so a lot of that area south, to get south of Arrow, you have homes that are on um industrially zoned properties. For example, if someone that lived in that home came in to want to do an addition, uh, they are prohibited from doing that. They could not add on to, essentially extending the life of these uses because through the general plan indicates that those uses are are not encouraged to um to be extended. Uh, so I just wanted to make that note. Yes?
Now, I have another question. As the units on Arrow are phased out, the residential units, does that add on to the number, the two thousand and one, that we're aiming for in the next eight years?
No, because that would be um that would be removal of those residential uses to um uh to conform to the what the zoning allows for. Uh, but yeah, those will not be added to or subtracted to uh or subtracted from the RENA. Next slide. The zoning map, um, uh, the zoning separates, again, as you mentioned, um, based on use. Uh, it separates a community into districts or zones that regulate the types of uses and intensity of the development. So a zoning designation is assigned to every legally defined parcel within a zone in the city and is typically shown in the form of a zoning map. So we use this day in and day out. Uh, we get calls every day, as what is the zoning and what is allowed on my property? That's everything from single family, multifamily, commercial, industrial, you name it. Uh, they want verification from the city what they can and what they can't do. Um, I will add that sometimes uh it is a little nerve-wracking for us as as uh practicing planners when people buy properties consulting with the city. So we always encourage uh people to do their due diligence um and and speak with someone at the city to confirm what's allowed and what's not allowed. Um, so we always, uh, it's a constant reminder for us to relay that to the community and also the development community. So I wanted to give you an example of what the zoning map looks like. Next slide. So here's the, here's the define, the general plan map is was general. Here is giving you the specific zone uh for each legal property uh within the city's boundary. Um, and again, that includes single family, uh, there's uh uh what's called garden multifamily and have multifamily residential, which is your higher density. And then you have commercial, you have um, I don't know. Oh, mixed use, those are the other things, you have mixed use zoning, um, you have open space, um, you have industrial and then industrial commercial zones. Uh, and then you have your open space and public facilities. Uh, so you can see that um, uh, again, this map is, I have a big map in my office that I use every day to to refer to. And I also wanna, I'll I'll say this for the end, but any questions on the zoning map? So um, uh, again, we use this day in and day out, and uh it's always interesting when you look at other cities. Uh, sometimes I'll I'll uh I'll go to other cities and it's very interesting what the boundaries are. They're always, they have these interesting shapes to them. But anyway, uh, that's just a a planning uh thing. Next slide. Oh, okay, CEQA. So the California Environmental Quality Act. Um, the goal there is to inform decision-makers about environmental effects, uh, identify ways to avoid environmental damage, also prevent avoidable environmental damage. Disclose to the public why a project is needed, even if it results in environmental damage. I'll go into detail about that. Foster, it also fosters intergovernmental cooperation. One good example about this with CEQA is that per state law, when we have to work on um a negative declaration or a mitigated negative declaration, uh, we have to consult with the tribes and let them know that there's a project within the vicinity, and this is required by AB fifty-two, SB eighteen. And we have to notify them thirty days in advance if they would like consultation. And what that means is that creates camaraderie among the intergov- governmental agencies and um requesting consultation. That's a common um uh intergovernmental um cooperation that we work with them. So for example, if they want consultation, it means that during grading of the project, they want uh someone to oversee that. For example, if there's any artifacts um that are found during grading, they would like uh to obtain those uh keeping. Uh, so depending, depending on how large the project is, or depending on where it is, sometimes the tribes will ask for um for consultation and for a monitor. Uh, sometimes you will s- uh, most of the times you will see that in our uh CEQA documents under uh um cultural resources uh that is identified in their document. Uh, it is also an informational document uh that analyzes potential effects and mitigation when considering a project. Again, one of the key things that uh CEQA uh reviews is traffic, also reviews air quality uh and essentially confirms that um project is going to comply with all the requirements set forth that the city has and also state and federal law. Lastly, it also identifies potential impacts and where possible um uh mitigations uh can be implemented to prevent or eliminate uh any impacts. Uh, one, one impact, for example, is um like a shade and shadow analysis. That six-story office building off of Dalewood included a shade shadow analysis. So that way, based on the location of the building, doesn't create uh a shadow effect on the neighboring residential, uh, which was in the city of West Covina. Um, doesn't rec- uh create a negative impact where those homes now don't have the sun shining on them. So actually, you don't have this this shadow effect uh that can negatively impact those um those residences. Next slide. So uh here are, Steph and I wanted to um wanted to highlight um these documents, uh, this information that we've gone over with you. Highly encourage uh to you to visit the planning webpage. Uh, the general plan documents, specific plans, our zoning code is on um is on that webpage. Also, information regarding the housing element update. There are workshop uh recordings, um, there's information on there that's very useful to you. But I highly recommend that you visit um the planning webpage. It also includes our contact information um uh in case you need to get a hold of us. Uh, the other one is the downtown specific plan update. Um, we're uh uh we received an SB two grant from HCD uh to update our existing downtown specific plan uh largely to increase the density. And there, that's where I want to bring in the housing element. Uh, the strategy there, use the housing out, the um downtown specific plan update uh to help us meet uh the RENA numbers. And again, we're going through that exercise, we're having some special meetings with the city council, decide on what the appropriate density would be within the downtown, maybe other areas of 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 the city out within the downtown. Uh, and again, the highlight there is uh in planning for additional housing within your downtown, we were getting a lot of interest in development within the downtown. Um, but the densities that were set were too low. So uh again, we're going through that exercise right now, we have a special meeting um scheduled, uh, go through that exercise with the council to provide some direction what that appropriate density is. Highly, highly encourage you uh to visit the the downtown specific plan update webpage. Um, there is uh a lot of information, great information that um that is is useful um as those documents, the housing element, safety, environmental justice, and the downtown specific plan are going to uh be presented before you for review and approval, uh, review and recommendation to city council for approval. Um, there are recordings of uh the workshops, uh, what they call a charrette meetings that introduce all the topics uh and all the exciting ideas that are being presented uh for and within um the the downtown for Baldwin Park. Uh, next slide. With that, um, I want to thank you for your time. Again, we're really excited and congratulate you again for your appointment onto the planning commission. Uh, and Steph and I are more than happy to answer any questions.
Mr. Garcia, I have a question.
Yes, Mr. Sir.
In regards to um the zoning, I think there was zoning change done when there was um that specific, the specific plan?
Yes.
How does that come about? Who who actually initiates the the zoning change? How does that come about? Is it through staff or is it the people that are coming in with the development?
So it's a developer, the developer. So it's uh done concurrently. Um, so when you look at the zoning, when you look at the zoning, the surrounding zoning designations within that area, uh, it complements what's adjacent. So they were able to um apply for a a zoning um zone change amendment uh so that way it was in conformance with what they were proposing. Um, that is brought forward by the developer uh with the project um itself. So it's it's presented concurrently and processed concurrently uh together.
What can we expect for the next uh planning commission meeting? Looking forward to that.
That was my next um uh next item. Thank you for that, Commissioner, uh, Banya.
I I took a peek at the consent calendar, and I think there were some items that were already um approved by the previous planning commission um that we will be, I guess, uh approving the consent calendar on the next council meeting, no? Or going over it?
Yes, yes, and uh, Mr. City Attorney, I uh, if I heard you correctly, the recommendation would be there, uh, again, we're we're moving that item to the next planning commission meeting?
Uh, yes, so on the consent calendar, um, commissioners, for this meeting, we had action minutes from May twenty-six, twenty twenty-one meeting. However, none of you were present at the May twenty-six, twenty twenty-one meeting. It would be unusual for you to approve minutes that you weren't present at. So in order to account for that, we're going to make available to you the audio from that meeting. We asked that you would, you know, review that audio so that you can then look at the minutes and approve them based on that review.
Are we allowed to make any recommendations on what's already been?
Well, um, yes, well, but see, these are not any recommendations as to the projects, because those have already been approved.
Yes.
But the minutes that you'll read and you'll see, okay, well, that's not really what it said. Or maybe you'll see, if you see a vote where they denied a project, but it was was really approved, those are the kind of changes you can make to make sure that the minutes accurately reflect what happened in that meeting.
The next planning commission meeting um is scheduled for September. The next planning commission meeting, um, is scheduled for September eighth. Um, so there are several items that are gonna be before you, come before you, uh, for your consideration, um, for review. Um, a planning commission agenda and the packet will be sent electronically, uh, the Thursday, uh, prior to the, uh, planning commission meeting.
And if I could ask, Ron, could you send me emails of all the commissioners so that I can send them an email, and then we'll have each other's emails as well? I gave him my phone number, but...
Yeah, yes, I will make sure. Um, uh, so the staff report, the agenda, uh, will be circulated to you the Thursday prior to, um, that commission meeting. And again, as the, Mr. City Attorney had mentioned, um, any, any questions, uh, that you may have, uh, you know, please feel free to contact us, um, uh, if, if, if needed.
Ron, uh, request, uh, PowerPoints, can we get those? Can we get those, uh, PowerPoints that you presented today, by email?
The, today's presentation?
Yes.
Oh, absolutely, I will, I'll go ahead and circulate those.
Thank you.
Absolutely. Um, otherwise, that's all I have, uh, to report, uh, to the commission. And again, congratulations, um, uh, on your appointment.
I'm sorry, uh, Madam Chairman, one other thing that, uh, I made a mistake on, was we didn't open up public communication. And so public communication is usually done in the beginning of the meeting. It's, uh, appropriate no matter when you do it, so the fact that we'll do it now is okay. But I do wanna make sure that we do that beforehand. And so, Madam Chairman, you would ask Madam Secretary if there was anybody that had, uh, uh, emailed or wanted to be on public. First thing you do is open public communication, so you'll say that, "I'm now opening public communication." You'll add, you'll ask. But then you'll ask, uh, Madam Secretary if there was any, uh, request for public communication. If there were none, then you will close public communication, and then you will adjourn the meeting.
Hey, Madam Secretary, were there any, uh, emails or any requests made for public communications? Perfect, thank you, then I'll go ahead and close public commi-
I thought we meant on the second and the fourth Wednesdays of the month, but you just said the next meeting is September eighth.
Yeah, the ni- the twenty-fifth meeting, the, um, August, uh, thank you for noting that. The August twenty-fifth, uh, planning commission will be canceled because the city council is gonna have a special meeting. Um, and so that will, will convene on, uh, September eighth. Uh, I, we'll like to note, um, what we'd like to do, again, be respectful of people's time and schedules, is, um, though planning commission meetings are scheduled every second and fourth Tu- uh, Wednesday of every month, uh, we try to consolidate them to maybe having one meeting, uh, uh, a month. Um, uh, and if need be, depending on the, um, uh, the importance of the matter, we may have just a planning, um, a planning commission meeting. But I assure you, um, that I'm very cognizant of not scheduling a planning commission meeting for one item. Uh, but again, they are, uh, every second and fourth Wednesday of every month.
Any other commissioners have any other questions, comments?
Sure, uh, do we use Robert's Rule of Order here? Or is it loosely, or?
You know, I, I don't think the council ever adopted Robert's Rules of Order, to be honest with you. Um, and I'm not sure if this, uh, this body did, but I believe we generally go by Robert's Rules of Order.
Yes.
Any other questions? So then at this point, I go ahead and move forward to adjourn the meeting.
I'll second it.
Thank you, have a good night, everybody. No objections to the adjournment? So that we've adjourned?